Hey everybody. Thursday, sign.
Good evening, and welcome to the Monday of November 15th, Muscatine Community School District Board of Education meeting. Tom, would you take roll call as opposed to term of form, please?
Director, here.
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 Eric Carter, Eric Foreman, Eric Schubert, Eric Forrest.
Thank you. During the pandemic, we began inviting classes to help us by leading the pledge of allegiance. And we've kept that. It was what I would call a COVID keeper. So tonight, virtually, we have joining us a pre-recorded version of Lisa Paul's fourth grade class from Grant Elementary. They're going to lead us in the pledge. So I would ask that you please stand, and we will say the pledge with Mrs. Paul's class.
I pledge allegiance to the love of God, of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hallelujah.
Thank you to Mrs. Paul's fourth grade class. It's always fun to see the span that each class puts on their pledge with their greeting at the end, so we appreciate that. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors this evening, as well as our media representatives. It's great when we have a big audience. The next item on our agenda will be our student school board update. Gentlemen, I'll pass it to you.
Hello there. Dylan and I just wanted to start off with congratulations to the MHS Drama Department. We had a very successful play this year, and it went great. And also, congratulations to our girls' school team, they did awesome. And next, I also have an update with our high school student council. More recently, we had a very successful fundraiser for Pan Ball. And I don't have an exact number, but I do know we raised a few hundred dollars for the MCSA with that event. And that went very well. And we are now currently planning on starting the Mr. Muscatine fundraiser, the male beauty pageant we usually have. And so we're very excited and looking forward to having that this year.
Okay, so I just have a few things. First, this coming Wednesday, I believe it is, the 18th, MHS administration is holding a parent meeting. I'm not 100% sure on the time of that. He didn't know when we talked last. But some of the topics that they're going to be discussing is a portrait of graduate and the freshman introduction, and what they're developing, as well as some safety topics, too. Weather sports are starting back up. We have boys swim, boys and girls basketball. I think that's it. But we're practice started last week for that, so we're finally getting into the swing of those. And finally, they're continuing to monitor hats and hoods being worn. From both a student and administrative perspective, it's not an issue at this time. And I personally think also that it's kind of comforting for students not to have to worry about that, as well as teachers having to take the time out of their day to stop that. And then just one more thing. Last Thursday, on Veterans Day, the high school held a ceremony. What happened was, last year in May, a student found an old WWII plaque that was dedicated to people who served during that time. It was found in a closet, no one knew about it. So they found it, and Dave Domitich, who's one of the ag teachers at the high school, as well as a student, Landon McCreary, restored it. And there's pictures up here of it. And yeah, so it's just dedicating the staff at the high school who have served in the Army. So that's great. And then Gabe and I just want to thank, you know, Erin, Tammy, and Toby, for all the work that they've done these past couple of years, serving on the board. I know, from my perspective, the new science wing that you guys helped pass was great for students, and I think it was really needed, and has done a lot to better the education of students.
Along with that, even the recent renovations in the music wing, we really appreciate all of your dedication to the students here. And we just wanted to say a big thank you to everyone here on the board.
Thanks, gentlemen. Does anyone have any questions for Dylan or Gabe before they, before we move on? The next section of our agenda is our citizen speak portion of the agenda. This is where anyone in the audience is welcome to address the board. We do have a time limit of three minutes. We'll have a timer on the screen for you. I know that goes very quick. We'll ask that you step to the podium. I have a list of names of those who have signed in to speak. So when your name is called, if you'll step to the podium and give your name and address for the record. I would also remind the audience that per our board policy, which is driven by Iowa code, we are not able to respond to you during citizen speak. So you are absolutely welcome and encouraged to share with the board. But a time that we can actually engage in conversation is, you can certainly grab board members before or after a meeting, certainly reach out with a phone call or an email, and again, and you can engage in a little bit different conversation than just the quick address this evening. So I'm going to start off with the first person who signed up. I'm going to apologize in advance if I say anybody's name incorrectly, but I have Ann and Tom Kremmer.
My name is Tom Kremmer. And I'm here because I want to object to any
Restriction.
Restriction on library books. I think it's totally wrong to to prevent them from being published, or prevent them being read. Our students need an unrestricted library, and just can't afford to, in this critical time, we can't afford to have students without the critical thinking skills, going against banning any of your books from libraries.
Thank you, Tom. The next name I have is a little difficult to read, so again, apologizing in advance. I believe it's Franz. Is it Silberger?
Franz Silberger.
Yes, so you can absolutely correct me when you're
That's fine. Yes, Franz, that's Franz. My name is Franz Silberger. I'm a Muscatine resident living in 3404 Spinning Wheel Court, and I've been living there for the past 40 years. While I am not a representative of scouting, I have been a scout leader for the last 35 years. And the scouting program holds helping young people to develop into contributing members of society. To that end, scouting has required youth desiring to earn highest rank in scouting, the Eagle Scout Award, to earn three citizenship awards as merit badges: citizenship in the community, citizenship in the nation, and citizenship in the world. And recently, scouting has developed another merit badge called citizenship in society, which now will all spear Eagle Required Merit Badge. This merit badge requires study and development in three particular areas: diversity, equity, and inclusion, all which are designed to lead to belonging. I have always thought of Muscatine as a welcoming community. If we want people to want to live in Muscatine, I personally believe we need to educate people, which includes our children, and the importance of welcoming all people regardless of their differences. As you move forward, I hope you consider who we are and who we want to be before you ban educational materials for our youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Franz. Next on the list is Deb, and I believe it's Haggy. Deb, did I pronounce your last name correctly?
You got it. I would like to ask, is it okay if I pull my mask down just for a second? Because I'm old and I have trouble hearing sometimes with masks. Although I totally support the mask ban, if everybody's okay, I'll pull it down just for a second.
Absolutely.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the new board members. Welcome to the board. You've been elected by our committee, or our community, so good luck with your serving. And I hope you're here to represent everyone in here. I'm here on behalf of Faith United Church of Christ Open and Affirming Committee. I'm a member of Faith United, where we believe that we should be open and affirming and welcome all members of all creeds, races, and sexual orientation. And as citizens of Muscatine and as people of faith, we respectfully ask you to consider that banning of books is both divisive and undemocratic. We believe that school libraries should reflect and respect the diversity of the community. I know firsthand that a lot of our elementary schools, the percentage of different races might exceed the percentage of white kids in those schools. We also believe that school libraries should honor and support the freedom of speech and the freedom to learn about the world from multiple perspectives. And finally, we note that the diversity of library books allows our children to become critical thinkers in a complex world. And I want to thank you guys for considering this perspective and for your time as elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Matt Mallard.
As an advocate, a voice of the community that will not be silenced, concern citizens of Muscatine, make the following statement regarding incoming board agenda, item three. Election of board president and VP, all board members supporting anti-Idiote and anti-Semitic opinions should be disqualified as school board president and VP nominations. I would like to start off thanking Clint Christopher for the time he continues to set aside for open dialogue regarding concerns that our community and I have had through the school year. I realize that we will disagree on certain items, but that having our voices heard is crucial to the superintendent, and myself, and this community during these times and moving forward for what's best for the community and our children. I also want to welcome new board members. Thank you. It is against... Man, this three minutes really sucks, I tell you. I want to welcome the new board members. I challenge the parents of this community to continue pushing you, challenging you, standing up for what's right. This community voted you in, you're elected officials, and you deserve to listen to us and the majority of this community. Our staff and students are scared to speak up, and that's a concern. The main issues I wanted to address real quick are dress codes and safety at our school, and lack of control that our administration has offered with the students. I understand there are many challenges that our schools need to focus on daily. However, due to leadership becoming numb to students, it is evident that the students are running our schools, and this needs to be stopped immediately. The students and staff of our school should not have to see teenage girls walking around in bras, or be told that if the shoulders or the butts are covered, then the attire is acceptable by administration. And due to this time constraint that I have, I can't go in depth enough about the transgender students that utilize our girls' restroom, yet still have male genitalia, or the females that use our male restrooms and still have female genitalia. I don't want my kids seeing that. I don't think you want your grandkids seeing it if you don't have kids in the school. These kids are not given any consequences. Our administration needs to be accountable, and us as a community will hold you that way. When it comes to the safety of our students and staff, the administration continues to cater to the 5% and 10% of students that choose to be a nuisance. This community, the school board, and administration need to find a way to resolve quickly and with affirmative action before more damage is done to our 90% and 95% of the students that want to be involved and be a productive member of our society. We as parents will not allow this disruption to continue, and we should hold the board and administration accountable. I want you all to know, this is not a school issue, this is a community issue, and we all need to stand strong working together.
Thank you, Matt. Next on the list is Ricky T.
Ricky T., 516 Sunrise Circle. I came with two things prepared. I did not actually want to share this, and I do respect the citizens that did share their comments about not restricting books in our libraries. But I feel that there are inappropriate subjects in our library, just like we rate movies that are appropriate for certain age groups. There are books that are rated appropriate for 14-year-olds and others that are in our high school. And I have a few excerpts from those books. And this is the critical thinking that I guess we're wanting our students and kids to have access to. Yes, I understand it's not part of the curriculum, but it would have to be controversial books part of curriculum. And I do teach my kids, you know, appropriate books, appropriate, you know, pictures, and my kids grow up learning that stuff. And so they are able to judge for themselves. But this is some things that I guess our school district feels that is appropriate for 14-year-olds or older. And so from the book, All Boys Are Blue, text, this is from page 201 to 202. And this book is about a memoir. And so these are events that happened to this kid. And I don't denounce that these happened to him, but the detail that they go into is explicit. He says, do you, this is cousin talking. "Do you feel that?" "Yeah." But I laughed and said, "Get your hands off my butt." You giggled. "That's not my hand." "You're lying," I said. "You then placed both your hands on my hips. As you lay side by side, there was still something poking me." "You were fully erect at this point." "I was nervous. We're going to get in trouble." "You can't tell anybody, okay?" "You said." "You promised that you weren't going to tell anyone." "I promise." "Then you grabbed my hand and made me touch it." "It was the first time I had ever touched a penis that it wasn't my own. I knew what was happening wasn't supposed to happen. Cousins weren't supposed to do things like this with cousins." And then, so this goes on for about five pages. Here's from 204, a little bit more ahead. "We sat together for about 10 minutes before you finally stood up. You then had me stand up with you. At this time, you were much taller than me, probably about a good foot. You told me to take off my pajama pants, which I did. You then took off your shorts, followed by your boxers. You stood in front of me with fully erect and said, 'Taste it.'" "At first, I laughed and refused, but then you said, 'Come on, Matt, taste it.'" "This is what boys like us do when we like each other." "I finally listened to you. You then got down on your knees and told me to close my eyes. That's when you began oral sex on me as well." It continues on to 205. Oh, I ran out of time. But I wanted to say, it's like a implosion, that there is a line crossed in this book. It is one thing to write about traumatic experiences about your life story, so we can learn from your experience. This example should be considered adult content, and children should not have access to in our schools. Education used to be about reading, writing, and arithmetic. More and more, more and more, it seems to be focusing on a new subject: normalizing sex and pornography. And I have more to share, but I'm sorry, my time is out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ricky. Next is, I believe, Sully, and I am not clear on the last name.
Is that Shelly?
Oh, Shelly, it is!
Yeah!
I am so sorry.
I live at 2629 Canterbury Road, Muscatine. I am a veteran of the United States Army. I am 100% disabled, MST, BPTSD. So I have some experience with being abused, traumatic events. And I can also say, as a child, I was abused, and the library was my refuge. And being able to go and look at books and read books, and read books about women who had overcome such traumatic events as what I was going through as a child, was a place that gave me hope, and helped me succeed and overcome my very traumatic childhood background, be able to go into the military, and overcome being terribly, terribly poor as a child, and succeed, and go on to use my military background to also put myself through nursing school and become a registered nurse, and go in to help people and save lives. Banning books, banning education, banning those safe spaces and places where children can check out books and read about different experiences and different backgrounds that look different than what we would expect, it cuts off lifelines to the outside world. If a child is in a place where things aren't necessarily safe, they might not quite know how to verbalize or explain what's going on, but if they can look at it in a book and put it all together, it might empower them and give them the ability to go to that nurse or go to that teacher and say, "This describes that situation I'm in. I read about it here, and now it makes sense that I have been in an abusive situation." And if you take that away from them because you want to ban a book because of your own ideology or your own narrow worldview, that's about you, not about what's best for your child. So I would urge all of you to not ban books, just because it might go against what you personally believe. And if you're so strongly convicted about that, the solution is clear to me, as it has always been throughout our country's history, put your kid in a private school. That's always been the answer. I pay him taxes, my kid goes to a public school, and if my private, because I'm a conservative Christian woman, I go to a Wesleyan church, and my kid is 12 years old, and these decisions are going to affect him. He is right now going through what you would call being gender fluid, and I fully encourage and support that. But I don't want the kids at school to get empowered and say, "Oh, this kind of stuff is banned at school." That's going to create a space for bullying to happen. So be careful with what you do and what you decide. You have to think these things through, beyond what your adult's perspective is now. You think about the kids at school. So I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Shelly. And next is Jim Elias.
I wasn't planning to speak, I just thought I was signing in.
All right.
He's my husband.
Well, that takes us through then all of our citizen speak individuals that signed up. So we thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts with the board. I will just, I will add that as, the board's responsibility is to govern. And we do have a policy that talks about the process of reviewing any material that's in the district. So I would invite you, if you have concerns, which it's, we've heard lots of different lenses tonight, which I think is great, it's a great representation of lenses within our community, to look at the 602.1 series. And the process of the board is outlined. Once you've thoroughly read a book that you have in question, there's a document that you fill out with the pieces that are of biggest concern to you. And then we start that process. So I would encourage you, take a look at that policy, read through what that process is, and it's been laid out by the board, and then you can work directly with our superintendent to get that process started. We appreciate you coming tonight. The next item on our agenda is the Iowa High School Music Association is here. We have the executive director, Alan Greiner, who I believe has a presentation to make.
Good evening. My name is Alan Greiner. I'm the executive director of the Iowa High School Music Association. On behalf of the Iowa High School Music Association, it's my distinct pleasure to honor and publicly recognize Tammy Dravoff for her service to music education in Iowa, as a member of the executive commission of the Iowa High School Music Association for the past five years. Mrs. Dravoff's service to music education in Iowa has truly gone far beyond the bounds of this district. Her calm, professional manner, her ability to think through tough situations, her strong sense of what is ethically right, has served Iowa High School Music Association and its members very well. During her tenure on the board, her leadership, insight, and perspective, her unwavering devotion to what's best for all high school students have time and again proven the invaluable. Tammy, thank you. Your dedication and service to the Iowa High School Music Association and its member schools, please accept this gift as a small token of our appreciation.
This is our consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the Board of Education and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the director or so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence from the agenda. Those items are minutes, bills, and claims. That includes the work session, and additionally, the, are we putting the official report of votes on the consent agenda, Tom? Or is that, that's separate?
That's separate.
Sorry. So just the minutes and bills and claims. What are the wishes of the board?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to present the consent, to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And motion carries. Sorry, Erin, I didn't mean to catch up.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda then is to accept the official report of votes from the Muscatine County Auditor. What are the wishes of the board?
I make the motion.
I'd like to see that accepted, the official reported vote.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the official report of votes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And motion carries. That takes us to the adjournment of this meeting. So tonight is always, each year, according to our board policy, we have a reorganizational meeting. So we will take a very quick recess after we adjourn, where we let retiring board members leave, and our new board members will find their spots at the board table. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Can I say something?
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Let's get the motion out.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. Thank you. To the current board, staff, faculty, administration, students, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve alongside of you this, in this season, even when we disagreed, it's my belief that we were all here for the right reasons, the betterment of our students, staff, faculty, and families of this great district. However, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge my one great regret as a board member. In September, when temperatures were running the highest, I should have been in the room with you, and for that, I'm sorry. Lindsay, Matt, and Ken, God bless you for choosing to run and to be elected. I thank you also to your employers and your families for sharing you with us in this endeavor we call the Muscatine Community School District. And to the rest of the community at large, every few years, in this great human experience we call America, we have an opportunity to choose to participate, if we choose to participate, to have our voices heard. One of the greatest gifts, if not the greatest gift of freedom, is our opportunity to vote, free of fear and intimidation. In the spirit of community, tonight is a victory for democracy. Thank you for entrusting me the last four years with your children. Thank you for entrusting me the last four years with your children, students, family, and friends. And the wise words of the Musky Cheer Squad. Let me hear your musky spirit. What do you say? Go, Muskies, go, Muskies, go, Muskies, go.
Well stated, Toby. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none.
I'm not following that.
I was kind of thinking the same thing. Hearing that, a motion on the floor that is for the current board to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Nay.
They'll be adjourned. You'll give us just a few minutes.
A ballot election, so.
I nominate John DeBee as president, please.
I move that they cease nominations.
And then cast unanimous?
Casting unanimous vote.
For John DeBee to be the board president? Is there a second for that?
A second.
Second by Denny? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Who was the nays? Matt. And Denny?
Ken.
Then, at this time, we'll go through the same process to vote for the office of vice president. A second is not required. If there's only one nomination, we will need a motion and a second to cast unanimous vote for vice president. There are more nominations, a motion is needed that nomination cease and to cast a unanimous vote for vice president, so.
I'll nominate Mike Morgan.
Can I nominate Karen Cooney?
Okay. So. Okay. If there are more motions, a motion is needed that nomination cease.
I'll make the motion that nomination cease.
All right, and? Is there a second for that? All those in favor that nomination cease, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Okay. Now we need our ballots. Okay, so on here, if you could just put your name and then by the vice president line, just put who you want to vote for. And then you can just hand them back. I mean, we'll. It's tied in 20 years, if that's. Okay. My assistant half of me is going to tell the story. Okay, John DeBee voted for Karen. Lindsay Phillips voted for Karen. Cam Ru voted for Mike Morgan. Mike Morgan voted for Mike Morgan. Matt Conner voted for Mike Morgan. Denny Schur voted for Mike Morgan. And Karen Cuny voted for Mike Morgan. So we have five for Mike and two for Karen, so. Now, I'm going to swear in each officer individually, so if John, if you could stand, please, and raise your right hand. John, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of board president in the Muscatine Community School District as now and hereafter required by law?
I do.
And Mike Morgan, please stand, raise your right hand. Mike, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of board vice president in the Muscatine Community School District as now and hereafter required by law?
I do.
Thank you, Mike. Congratulations. So it's my honor now to turn the meeting over to you, John DeBee.
Thank you, John.
Yes.
Appreciate that. Good evening, everybody, and again, I would like to thank the three outgoing board members, Tammy Dravoff and Toby, for their service for the school board and for the years that they served on behalf of the community and working hard for, again, making our school district one of the best districts in the state of Iowa. Thank you for the confidence that I receive from board members. Whether you voted for me or not, I extend my hand to work with all of you. I am here a person who has been in education for over 30 years. Education means a lot for me. I will always, always, always extend my hand to work with everybody. My approach to leading the school board will be a team work kind of approach. I don't make decisions on my, by myself. I always go back to whatever team I work on, get their feedback, and move forward with making decisions. I look forward to work with all of you, as I mentioned again, and let's proceed with the agenda items and move forward with that. One of the first items on the agenda that we need to take care of every year is basically the different appointments to different individuals, banks, law firms, and so on. And as a board, we can basically make a motion, basically to vote on all of them as one item, or we can go if the board chooses one item at a time and make a motion, vote, and move to the second item. So what are the wishes of the board? Would you like to talk about all of them as one motion? And I will read them. Basically, the items that we have, appoint Daphne Donald as board secretary, appoint Tom Anderson as board treasurer, designate Trust National Bank, CBI Bank, and Trust Community Bank of Muscatine as official depositors of district funds in the amount of $15 million each, appoint Stanley Lending and Hunter Allos GoFund, and Lynch Dallas PC as councils to represent the school district in legal matters on a time base, designate the Muscatine Journal as the publication of record, designate Bo- Hansik and Formant as auditor of record, appoint district compliance officer, approve revised board policies, 2 or 3.8E conflicts of interest, 1 or 2R1 civil rights regulations, 1 or 4 discrimination and harassment. So what are the wishes of the board? Shall we vote on each item or shall we vote on all of them as a package?
I'll make the motion to vote on all of the appointments.
Okay, we have the motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, those of you who are in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carried.
John, do you want to say no?
No.
No, I think you just said, they're all ayes.
The next item is the organization of the board. Every year, we select some of the board members to go and serve on certain county boards or ad learning boards and so on. But first of all, item A, board meeting schedule for December of 2021 through November of 2022. I would like each board member to take the opportunity to look at the meeting schedule and make sure that this works for you, and if you have any conflict in any of those months that you have to serve, please let me know, let Daphne know, and let Clint know so that we can adjust this. The second item, board assignments, so we start with the appointment to the county conference board, and our board member, Denny Schur, has been serving as the county conference board. Denny, can we ask you to give us some sort of an update of what you have been doing and would like to continue to serve on that board?
Yeah, I'll continue to serve. Basically, we have two meetings a year and we approve the budget for the county auditor assessor, and that's basically it. The meetings don't last for long.
Thank you for your service, Denny. Do we have a motion to, again, elect Denny to continue to serve on the county conference board?
I motion to allow Denny to continue to serve on the county conference board, please.
I have a second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? Okay, all those of you who are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carried. The second item is appointment to the ad learning center board, and Karen Cooney was our representative, and so Karen, can you please give us some information about your work there and if you wish to continue to serve on that board?
I can. It was actually very much an eye opening, especially since it's at 7 o'clock in the morning, but actually, it was very, very nice to see how well-run that we have our FFA area and such, that A, those guys are really top-notch. They know, Tom Tuck and those guys know what they're doing. We are just kind of like a partner with them, so to speak, and MCC is also a kind of a partner with that as well. And if any of you have a chance, I would love for you to be able to know more about how they have been writing for success, that they actually do down there as well. So it's a program that serves our community very well. I have not a problem about taking and continuing that service, but if there is somebody of our union board members or something that would like to be able to do that, I would not have to be opposed to that. No, I knew it was a 7 o'clock in the morning. Yeah, so yes, I will continue to do that.
Okay, do we have a motion and second, please?
I'll make the motion to have Karen come, eh, representative.
Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, motion carried. The last item is appointment to the audit committee. Traditionally, the president of the board serves on this, but I would like to nominate Mike as the vice president to be representing the board on the audit committee if he accepts.
Give me a second. What's your background? I go through the audit, I would be more than willing to do it, but if there's somebody that's had a better understanding of what they're looking at, I'm.
I can just let you know that, so the audit committee has been in existence since before I started, so this is my fifth, starting my fifth year. So I think sometimes like two or three years before that started, but it's made up of, there's five seats on it, not including a board member, but right now, we have three people sitting on it. I have an excellent communications guy out recruiting two more people for that, for the positions on there, but the board, the committee meets twice a year at the most. It's usually one 12 to one over the lunch hour. We'll typically meet in the fall during our initial fieldwork audit, and then we'll meet again probably around January when the audit report is released, but the background of the people on that committee provide, I think, a value to the school board in that they kind of understand how audits work. Many of them in past lives did audits for Muscatine Community School District, so they're familiar with it, and I would say it's minimal time commitment, but again, it's probably twice a year, and the board representative can be anybody, and they can provide, you know, additional guidance, I guess, to bring back to the school board once the recommendation is made from the audit committee, so.
Again, I'm fine. I would gladly accept the nomination. If there's somebody that has a better understanding of the audit process and of the verbiage, I don't know. Matt says I'll be fine, I'll accept. I don't know what everybody's background is, but then I just know that's not mine. I'm an educator, or was an educator. I'm retired.
You'll be fine. You'll be fine. But I think, yeah, you nominated, but I don't think the president can nominate somebody, so anyway, we can vote on Mike, I guess, so. Does Mike?
No, Mike.
Okay, you have a motion.
Thanks, man.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second of nominating Mike to serve on the audit committee.
With a second. Okay, thanks, Denny.
All those in favor of this nomination, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
And I just want to back up to the board meeting schedule. So for the new board members, there are, you are on the list, rotating list of two people that review the monthly bills, and it's done electronically. You'll get instructions from Nicole Miller, who's the district accountant for the district, and she will send you out a list of the bills. You can review them, and then, should you have questions on any of them, either her or myself would be glad to email you, you know, the answer or email you invoices or whatever it is you need to see. So that's done electronically now, and then your approval, that can just be done electronically, and then that's what gets presented at the school board, like what you saw at the first meeting. That's what the summary gets presented at the board meeting, but you will, you have the detail when it comes to your time. And if there's a month that you can't serve, you know, just let us know and we'll, you know, switch it around a little bit, so. Just wanted, sorry, just wanted to let the new board members know that.
Thank you, John. We move to the next item on our agenda, board targets and goals report. We have the following items. Students will graduate prepared for course secondary options. Under this item, we have work-based learning, Brandon Welch and Carrie Hawkins. Item B, Muscatine School will utilize resources effectively and equitably. And item C, students will learn in a positive and supportive. And item C, students will learn in a positive and supportive environment. I will turn this to Clint here. Did I get it from here?
Yeah, thank you. I'm excited to welcome Brandon and Carrie tonight from our high school counseling department. Uh, they've done a ton of work on our work-based learning program. Uh, I want to give them an opportunity to share some of those updates and, uh, some of the exciting work that's happening with that program. So with that, I'll turn it over to Carrie and Brandon.
My name's Carrie Hawkins and I'm a counselor at the high school. My title starting this year is college and career counselor. And Brandon Welsh is our workplace learning counselor. Um, I'll try not to get long-winded, but I've been at the high school since 2003. And I'm not sure that I've been more excited about a change that we've made, um, outside of this one. The high school, uh, or the district, I guess, last year, at the end of the school year, decided to change the graduation requirements from 25 credits required to 22. Um, in addition, they made some changes to the math and science requirements uh, that every student is needing to complete in order to receive their high school diploma. The reason behind it is to give students more of an opportunity to explore, um, their post-secondary intentions while they were in high school. And then to make that diploma relevant to what those post-secondary intentions were. We felt like we had students who were just checking the boxes of getting their diploma and not feeling like they were doing relevant work. So by limiting the number, lowering the number of credits, it really freed up a student's schedule, particularly in their 11th and 12th grade year, to give them some of the opportunities that you see up on the board. Uh, we have students that are taking classes at the high school that earn college credit. Those are called concurrent enrollment courses. So our Muscatine High School teachers are teaching college curriculum in our building. And the students are earning credit. A lot of those happen in classes like agriculture, uh, business. A class called film's literature. We also have students who are enrolled in Muscatine High School and MCC career academies. And you can see the list there. And I'll go into some detail about what our enrollment looks like. But these are very specific academies that are set up, uh, intention, or intentionally for students to either go directly into a program by completing prerequisites, um, or giving the students an opportunity to explore the actual career. So things hands-on like welding. Um, we have an advanced manufacturing, uh, academy and agriculture academy. And then you'll see down at the bottom, they are planning to add next year auto tech and plumbing. Um, in addition to that, we have a whole new work experience program that, that Brandon will touch on. That really gives students the opportunity to explore careers in a couple of different ways. One, they may have a one-track mind. They already know what they want to do. I want to go into education. I want to be a teacher. And he can help set them up with maybe an experience in a school building in a particular grade level, or maybe they want to bounce around between grade levels. And then that multi-track, a student who says, I know I want to do something in a skilled trade, but I'm not exactly sure. Maybe they spend four weeks, um, on a construction site. They spend four weeks with a plumber. They spend four weeks in a machining. Um, we have a lot of students who say, I want to do something in business. They have no idea what they want to do in business. They don't understand the difference between marketing and finance and human resources. So we can, we can move them around because they have the flexibility in their schedule. So the benefits really, um, for the students, it allows them to do things, particularly from my vantage point of getting them enrolled in a college course. It allows them to take a college course while they still have the support of Muscatine High School faculty as well as the MCC faculty. And I have students sign a FERPA waiver when they sign up for an MCC course so that their parent can get communications with the instructor, um, which will be different than if they graduated from high school and went on to college. So just this evening, I introduced myself to, to Mr. DeBeat. And I said, my daughter's in your economics class and she really enjoys it. Um, he normally, under some circumstances, wouldn't be able to give me information about her course. But because she signed that FERPA waiver, we can exchange that information. Uh, one of the big benefits is cost savings. So right now with the tuition at MCC per three-credit course, a family is going to save about $537 just in tuition. But our students also get their textbooks paid for. Uh, if they have equipment, like the, the night stuff that they need for the culinary academy or their broiler uniforms, those are paid for. Um, background checks for CNA, state testing fees for CNA, all of those things. It gives our students the opportunities to earn some credentials while they're still in high school. They will get OSHA through the advanced manufacturing academy, SERCS Safe through the culinary academy. And then, uh, students who finish the first year of the healthcare academy are state-licensed CNAs. It also makes students eligible for a connections scholarship at MCC. And the connections scholarship is automatic for students who complete a certain number of credits while they're in high school at a certain GPA. So that top-tier scholarship, if a student earns 12 credits while they're in high school and they have a 3.0, they get two semesters of half-price tuition. So for a student who's Pell eligible, they can go to school for free and potentially make some money, depending on where those scholarships and grant monies come from. Um, and then finally, it just allows students to work through their gen ed classes and their prerequisite courses so that when they get to college, they can go right into the major that they're excited about going to college for. I have a freshman, she's a freshman with 64 credits at the University of Iowa, and she isn't taking one gen ed class. Every class of her first semester was a therapeutic recreation course, and she likes school. Um, if she was sitting in gen ed classes, I'm not sure she'd be having the same experience at the University of Iowa. These are our fall enrollments. And I just this week finished up in classrooms and am starting to enroll for second semester. You can see the numbers there. We have 106 students who are taking 167 individual or CCIR courses. So this is any student who comes in and says, I would like to get public speaking out of the way before I go to college. And they're choosing individual courses based on what their plan is. Uh, we have 70 total students enrolled in the different career academies. And you can see the breakdown there. Um, healthcare is our largest. And we actually run a morning healthcare academy and we run an afternoon healthcare academy. The numbers that aren't up there are the numbers of students who will just do CNA. So a majority of the students who are in the healthcare academy have the intention of going on and getting a further degree. Maybe they want to be a S N. Or a student who is going to, um, enroll in a pre-physical therapy program or pharmacy program. Those prerequisites are the same. We do have some students who want their CNA. And that's as, as far as they want to go with their application. So if we have students next semester who are in the healthcare academy that don't necessarily need their spot in CNA, we'll put them in a different course. And then those students can enroll and still, still get their CNA and be finished. Um, what we found out last year was the students who just won CNAs, that completed CNAs, continued and enrolled the next fall to advance their degree. They just didn't know that they had the ability or the funds to do so. And then down at the bottom are the first-year academies. Uh, we have a K-12 teacher academy. Business is prerequisite courses like economics and financial managerial accounting. We have one student enrolled in the networking and cybersecurity. And then the bottom one, to me, is one of the most exciting. And this is the AA transfer. So this is a student who says, I have no idea what I want to do. I have no idea where I want to go. But I don't think I want to stay at Muscatine, right? They're all going somewhere else if you ask them. Um, so this allows them to take gen ed classes that I can map pretty closely, knowing that it's either going to contribute to an AA degree at MCC or I know that they can transfer it to a four-year university and check some of those general education boxes.
I want to talk a little bit more about the, uh, work experience opportunities that we're creating. And first, I want to thank our administration, um, and also our community business leaders for their support in making this work. Uh, it makes, it's common sense to me. Uh, but I'm really excited to be, uh, refocusing our, our efforts towards this. Um, we view this, the career, work experience opportunity in a, in a matter of steps. And I want to note that I'm referencing the high school here when I'm speaking. But we do have K through 12, some career exploration going on. We're hoping to expand that as well. So, um, I'll kind of go through those. The first step would be career awareness. And this is probably some of the stuff that's going to be occurring more, K through 12 and, and K through eight, nine, where we're learning about work. Uh, we do have a new career exploration class that was started this year for ninth and 10th graders. Right now, students are required to take interest inventories through my academic plan. That's the current, uh, server that we're, we're using. We have guest speakers in. Our goal would be to help us out and to help them out would be for a student to identify a career, a career within the career cluster or one or two by the end of their sophomore year. So they may not have a specific career in mind, but if they have an area to target, then we're able, able to help them a little bit better. There's also career exploration, which is learning around work. Those would be job shadows. We have, uh, some of those set up and, and some that have happened already. We want to make those specific to career interests, not just random job shadows that we're sending kids out to. We have, I actually have a couple this week, one at Musco, um, one at Creagers Automotive. I know our Muscatine Police Department has offered students that are interested in criminal justice to, to go and ride along and ask some questions. So that's in the works. But we've had a lot of community response. I'm leaving a lot of people out that I've already spoken with. But, uh, those one-to-three-hour job opportunities and worksite tours will be happening. The career preparation, which is learning through work. This is the one that I'm the most excited about, or the step that I'm most excited about. This would be internships. And I will say that, um, we're, we're kind of focusing on those being paid. Although unpaid still adds some value to our students. They will earn elective credit and get that opportunity to experience work on the job site. Those could also include, uh, pre-apprenticeships, collaborative learning projects, which I'll talk about here a little bit more. The internships, we have some students right now that are at HNI Stanley, amongst others, that are focused on engineering. We have a lot of our, our students that are interested in teaching out at different schools within our district and Saint, Saint Mary Mathias as well. Uh, spending some time during their school day, working with other classes. I have some students in construction already. So we're just building this right now, um, between our new work-based learning program, some of the existing connections with some other departments. Um, our special education program has students working, um, every day throughout our community. We have about 50 students right now that are, are placed in long-term work experience. I would say, uh, a lot of those are paid as well. So, um, we have some more opportunities that we're looking for. I will say next year, we will have even more room in their schedule because this year we weren't able to plan ahead of time. Next year, we're going to be able to block out some room in, in the schedule for students that are looking to do this during their school day. And we'll be able to place them appropriately. And finally, we have, uh, there's just an example, sorry, of, of one of our spotlights, uh, one of our students that's been working with Happy Construction. Appreciate Tony and Jenny Kellman for helping to, uh, publish that within our social media. And finally, learning for work, this would be more when a student is, is pretty sure of their specific career path. Some of this could occur after graduation as well, too. But, um, full-time apprenticeships, on-the-job, job training, employer mentorships, those are all things that can be worked into the school year two if a student is, uh, really aware of what they're interested in. I want to go back to another, um, project that we, that I really like the format of and that we're looking to expand into other arenas as a collaborative work project. We are going to be expanding our high school and creating a new student center, which will begin construction next fall. Mr. Christopher and H and I had a discussion about how we can get students involved. And we've kind of run with that. And, and I love the work that's been going on so far. We have 11 students right now that are going to be working with employees from, from Han and helping to create the design, work on budget, marketing, everything that's involved in the ground floor up. So those students were selected all based upon their career interests. So we have some students who are interested in marketing, uh, design, engineering, finance, some student leadership. And they've already been meeting with, with Han, with deadlines. Uh, they're going to be working with, around budgets and everything. Um, and they will be able to propose, uh, their design ideas to administration and to our student body and to finalize that project. So they'll be able to use the space that they've worked on and see the process through in a real-world setting. So we're hoping to expand that into other arenas. Um, I've kind of got something in the work, works with students interested in law as well, too, with something like that as well. So, uh, just an idea. We're, we're hoping to push some of this down, uh, to maybe a year or so. Or either, but generally, ninth and 10th graders will still be in that explore stage of guest speakers, kind of figuring out what jobs are, are all about. 11th grade, they may start on MCC academies, start looking at some job shadows. And then 11th, 12th grade year, really starting to get into those internships and, uh, some of the collaborative work projects. Um, I want to go through a couple quick testimonials.
Enjoy my experience working with Han so far because it's...
I'll go through a couple of these quick testimonials and then, um...
So, Danny, just giving us opportunity to work with them, see what it's like to work in the construction field. And I've always been interested in that kind of thing. Just truly able to get my feet ready in this situation and actually get to experience what I could be doing in the future, like. It just really gives you some experience that you need to get started rather than trying to look somewhere where they take someone with no experience. Actually have some experience and training. And we'll definitely take you where any other person who's going to come right out of high school and want that position, give, you have the experience that they need. So, Danny, just giving us opportunity to work with them, see...
So from the Han company's perspective, there's a lot of benefit to partnering. So from the Han company's perspective, there's a lot of benefit to partnering, um, for a project like this. For some of our leaders, it gives them some opportunity to organize around a new opportunity and help teach new skills. But even more importantly to me, for some of my team members who are individual contributors who don't have an opportunity to be leading other members yet, this gives them a really great opportunity to start thinking about how they want to show up as leaders and how they want to interact with other people to create partnerships. So from the Han company's perspective, we have a lot of opportunity for career growth on our own in partnering with a project like this. For the students, I really hope that what they take away is that it can be fun to have a job. I hope that they see that we love what we do and that we can be passionate about something that also makes us money. And we, I hope too that they're learning that the skills that it takes aren't just the things that they're learning in textbooks, but the soft skills that they can see as they're interacting with our team members of going through the interviewing process. And I hope that they get a lot of reward from working alongside their peers and listening and learning to serve their peers in the process of coming up with solutions for this project.
So I've really enjoyed my experience working with Han so far because it's given me more opportunities on my leadership and expanded my vision on what, how what students can intertwine and help make something that they will actually be able to use. And I think this is really good because it helps our students become more involved and make something that we will be proud of. And in this student center, I want to see more areas for collaboration because I feel like our school building lacks that right now. I also want to see spaces for students to study on their own because I also think our building lacks that, just like a quiet space for students to get work done.
Thank you.
I just want to open up to any questions from the board. Randy, can you give me a, uh, just a rough idea of what a career cluster would be?
Yeah, there's 16 career clusters and those are decided by the, I think the federal government's come up with that. So this is just one example. Um, so you got architecture, A, there's healthcare, finance. And with each, each of those, there's specific careers as well. So when they're doing the my academic plan, um, their personal interests, skills are calculated and they come back with career questions that match them. Um, might not always be what they want to do, but kind of gets them to a starting point.
Thanks.
I actually, um, worked for Job Trading Partnership Act, uh, JTPA, many years ago, and worked with clusters and such like that. So I'm very well aware of it. And I'm very, very happy to see that we have that now in our schools. Because most of the people that I've worked with, uh, also in self-sufficiency program for head programs, was long after they had been in school and then turned to all that catch-up, um, on there. So I'm very happy to see that. But I would love to be able to possibly ask Gabriel and Dylan, uh, what are your thoughts about what has gone on with this program thus far? And what do you see in the future for it?
Yeah, so I haven't, uh, been involved too much with the work-based learning. Uh, I've heard a lot about it. But for the MCC classes, uh, I started them this year. And with the changes the board made to the graduation requirements, um, I only have four high school classes. So I'm able to take three MCC classes, um, online. And so I've kind of sat down and looked at it and I'm able to get rid of the redder credit at Iowa, um, uh, humanities credit at Iowa. So I think it's really beneficial for students if they know what they want to do to be able to take them and they're paid for. So it's saving me money as well.
From what I've seen, it's been very helpful for a lot of students. There's a lot of my peers that I know who have plans after school that now always involve university. And these programs have always been able to help them expand and find their different industries that they're interested in. And being able to just find what they want to do. want to do and get like a head start in that so that when they're out of high school, they can go straight into the work. It's been a lot of positive reviews and it's been very helpful for these students, motivating them to get their high school diploma, as now it helps them open their eyes to a variety of careers. And it's just been very helpful for so many students, opening this door of opportunities that makes them feel more welcome in our schools and also makes them feel more appreciated that they have more options and careers to pursue other than just a four-year degree.
I do have to remember that I took the test myself and they said I could be a rocket scientist. And I remember laughing so hard about that, but what I actually really realized from that was, oh, I could be more than what I thought that I could be. And you'll say I did not become a rocket scientist, but at the same time, I definitely grew much, much more. So I commend you guys for what you're doing for the kids, to give them that opportunity to decide what is much more for them.
We've been in the classroom for about the last six weeks doing the inventories and probably the biggest thing for me is that students have an idea of what they think certain job titles do. They really have no idea what those jobs are at all. And so it's hopefully going to make, help them make more informed decisions about the classes that they take before they've gone and spent a bunch of money on something that they didn't actually want to do.
And I'd like to echo what you just said because, you know, we see the high school students at the college and having this opportunity at an early age to be taking a college course might change their vision to what they want to do in the future in their life. They are learning, they are experiencing different classes and based on this, basically, they are deciding hopefully and making better decisions. So thank you for sharing the informations with the board and with everybody here and we keep looking forward to hear back from you with updates on this program because I think that's a great way to go for our students.
I do have one question. What are the eligibility guidelines, if any, or what would disqualify a student from participating and then is it open to the homeschool partnership?
As far as taking courses at the college?
Both for work-based learning and the...
For work-based learning, there are some jobs that H does matter a little bit, although I have found that they're, if they're working with a coordinated work-based learning program through the school district, there are more allowances than if they were to just go off the street and try to do some of those things. So I don't think there's too much lack of eligibility. I think we would definitely be open to homeschool students working, getting some work-based experience as well, too. I will say as counselors and administration, obviously, we're going to tie some things back to their performance at school as well, too. It's kind of the chicken before the egg where if a student isn't attending very much or their attendance is poor, the last thing we want to do is take them out of a school day to be able to go on a work experience, but at the same token, they may, might garner some motivation and might start going to school. So that's a fine line there, but that does play a little bit of a factor with us.
Going to be a college graduate and work experience. So thank you guys for the work that you've done.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Just the last thing I would say is again, thank you to both of you. As we talk about the high school and the district, a lot of this continues to flow out of that work of Portrait of a Graduate, which really talks about creating additional pathways for our students. We know we're going to have students that go right into the world of work. We know some are going to go two-year apprentice program, military, some are going to go four-year college in university, some are going to Ivy League schools, right? We have all of those students in our schools and we have to be able to serve them all well. And these all start to provide those opportunities to move them in the right direction, give them skills and experiences so they can be successful with whatever pathway that they choose. And as a community, we should be really proud of that work that they're doing, so thank you.
Pardon me, I actually got me thinking of something else. It's almost like, can any of the kids that are going through this, can they actually be mentors to some of the younger kids that are looking to go through it so that they can see, you know, how well the program has worked for them so that they can, that might help motivate more and more kids in which to be able to come and follow?
Yeah, that's a great idea and we're just starting this. In fact, I was like, this might be a little early to even share some of the things we're doing, but that's a great idea and we're open to anything like that as well. I think that's something we'll take into consideration.
We now have a joint position between MCC and the high school. Elise Cress spends half of her time there and half of our time here and her half of her job at MCC is to follow the students who are enrolled one year after high school. So it's really easy for her to connect students back to the kids that we have on campus right now.
Thank you, Elise. Next item on the agenda is action, possible action. The following items are considered to be reviewed by the Board of Education and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the director saw a request. In which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. The items are employment recommendations, special education contracts, district committees, and final reading on policy. What are the wishes of the board?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Go ahead. Second. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Karen. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carried. Thank you. That takes us to item F on our agenda. Approve MSA request for access LEP course for serving English language learners in a limited English instructional program during the 2021 school year. The district's administration is authorized to seek modified supplemental amounts from the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of $548,430 to provide 100% spending authority for the school year 2021. Actual post of LEP program instructions. What are the wishes of the board?
So just maybe for the new board members, I will just say something, you know, this is a, this is one of the area and this is, the concept of spending authority is so new for you guys, like, so long have you been on the board? Now, I strongly encourage you to, when you attend ISD convention, to, you know, take the School Finance 101. It'll introduce you to this concept of spending authority and it's unique to Iowa Public Schools, it's unique to Iowa, it's unique, I don't think any other state in the United States has the concept of spending authority. And so this is what we're talking about tonight. The first action item is regarding the year that we just finished. One of the areas that if we overspend, we can ask for spending authority for that dollar amount. So one of the areas we get extra funding for are serving our LEP population, limited English proficient kids. You might also hear ESL, English as a Second Language, same thing. So for, again, for FY21, I believe I included on the second page kind of the process of how this is calculated and so we're asking, again, it's routine, it's spending authority, there's no cash behind it. We had to use our cash reserves to, you know, basically fund our LEP program this year. So then this is for, as I said, FY21, so I would, I could answer, I could try to answer any questions you might have. Maybe it's too soon to ask any questions for the new board members, but again, it's something that has happened every year, so it's not, nothing new.
Okay, what are the wishes of the board?
I can move to approve the supplemental amounts from the Budget Review Committee in the amount $548,430.
Thank you, Lindsay. I'll second. Thank you. Any question or discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving MSA requests for access LEP course for serving English language learners in a limited English instructional program during the year 2020, 2021 school year, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carried. Thank you, Tom. Item G, approve open enrollment out not on prior year's head count.
Okay, so now we are going to talk about the current fiscal year spending authority. So you'll learn that our funding this year in '21, '22 is generated by the count from last October of 2020. So in, when we did our count this year in October of '21, there were 40-ish roughly students, 40.6, and we get the .6 from weighted kids such as homeschool assistance program. That's where we get a .6 from. So there were 40 kids on this year's enrollment that were not on last year's because remember, we're getting funding for kids this year. We have to send dollars to these schools. So we want to make sure we get the authority to send, you know, we have to send it anyway, so we need to ask for the spending authority for sending that, these dollars to those other districts. So that's what this asking is for.
Okay, what are the wishes of the board?
I make the motion for approval of the open enrollment opt-out prior year second.
Can I second that?
Thank you. All those in favor of approve the open enrollment out not on prior year's head counts, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carried.
Thank you.
H, same thing, Tom, would you like to step forward?
I would just today.
Because those three items are yours.
So again, we're talking about FY22 and in our funding formula is included basically state dollars for limited English proficient kids, but that's only for kids that are in an LEP program for five years, years one through five. So what happens is when we do our count in October of 2021, we are allowed as a school board to ask for that additional authority for those students served beyond five years because we do serve students beyond five years. So that's what this asking is for, again, for the current year, for the additional of $132,326, so.
Okay, thank you, Tom. What are the wishes of the board?
I move that we approve the limited English proficiency instruction beyond the five years for the $132,326.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor of approving the limited English proficiency instruction beyond five years for the amount of $142,326, brothers, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, for all your help. We move into next item on our agenda, which is the last requirements for students and staff. And Clint?
Thank you, John. So I'm going to talk through a little bit of my recommendation, the data I've used in determining that and to start out, just going to read back from my comments from our meeting in September and it frames some of that conversation. So I apologize for reading, but I want to try to get all these comments out correctly. So at that time, what I said towards the end of that statement was, given the current conditions and the data as it is today, it would be my recommendation for you to implement mandatory mask policy for pre-K through sixth grade until that age group has access to a vaccine. I believe that should only be during the instructional day, indoors, and not for after-school activities or other events. Staff at that level should also mask in the presence of students. Since the beginning of the year, all students riding buses in the district and our drivers have been required to wear masks. We have procedures in place from last year with options for students who for medical reasons could not wear a mask. We will also continue to provide masks for all students who need them and specialized masks where necessary as well. Should that be your decision, we will need to allow parents an opportunity to make decisions to move students to a virtual classroom. I would also suggest a grace period for implementation. We need to allow time for staff and parents to work through the logistics and talk to their students. I would recommend that implementation be effective Wednesday, September 22. Conditions may change again as they did last year. As before, we will adjust accordingly. Regardless, once vaccines are available to all of our students, I believe at that time, a mask requirement would no longer be necessary. So that's where I was in September on the 17th, 30th meeting. So here we are, again, conditions have changed. Vaccines are now available for students from age five to 11. Those vaccinations began on November 5th. Those vaccinations are available multiple spots throughout the community. And then looking at some additional data relative to our current environment, similar to what we talked about in September. Our monthly illnesses at a school level related to COVID have dropped approximately 75% from the levels they were in September. Our weekly absence rates related to COVID have dropped from a high of about 32% to approximately 11%. Please keep in mind that that changes each week. Usually it's about 3% in either direction. Some weeks it goes up, some weeks it goes down, but it's been right around that 10% to 11%. Our current active COVID cases in the districts for students is a total of six. We have five at the elementary level. The current district COVID rate for that number would be about .13%. At the highest, at the building that has the most number of students, which is currently three, that rate would be .65%. Our staff absences for personal and family illnesses for our teachers has dropped by about a third of where it had been in September. So we've seen those illnesses decline over time. For our paras and non-certified staff, we've seen their absences pretty low over that course of time. So our teachers, those have gone down, paraprofessional staff has been fairly consistent. Vaccination rates in Muscatine County have continued to improve. We have 65% fully vaccinated and over 70% have had at least one dose. And we see that number continue to climb and it will continue to climb now as we add additional students and children five to 11 into that number. That's really positive. Hospitalizations in our region, now that's not just Muscatine and Muscatine County, but as our region, those have dropped by about a third as well and that includes inpatient hospitalization and ICU. And as you know, boosters are now available and it's my understanding on November 30th, the FDA is expected to authorize an over-the-counter treatment for COVID, similar to Tamiflu. But again, if you take that early on as you're positive with COVID, would reduce hospitalizations by 90%. So all these data points are positive, they move us in the right direction. We're going to no doubt continue to see changes in our county rates. We've already seen that start to just tick back up a little bit from where it's been a few weeks ago. We may experience additional waves due to the holidays, due to additional indoor activities. We know, again, we see additional sicknesses in the winter regardless. My original recommendation... My original recommendation was for the pre-K six mandate. You know, part of the justification behind that was access to a vaccine. As I read through my comments from September, that's clear now. That access exists, exists now. Our data has improved, and given additional vaccination and treatment options, we're in a significantly better position than we were in September. So at this time, it'd be my recommendation to remove our mask mandate and continue to strongly recommend masking at all levels for students and staff. I would suggest an effective date of Wednesday, November 17. As we did going into the mandate, we need an opportunity to communicate with our parents to determine which students should continue to wear masks and work through the logistics, including communicating with our students. While students will not be fully immunized at that point, and that's about a five-week process. So they get the first injection, wait three weeks, get the second one, wait two weeks to be fully immunized. So they will not be at that point. Again, while they will not be fully immunized, with access to the vaccine, opportunity to mask, I believe it would still provide a safe environment for our students. And with that, you'll need to have a motion and a second in order to begin discussing the topic.
I'll make the motion to remove the mask mandate starting November 17.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and we have a second to remove the mask on the 17th. So now we open for discussion.
Clint, we, if we entertain the idea of possibly, I know we did it for, we did it for staff having a vaccination clinic for student body.
Yeah. So we are in the process of working with public health at Central Middle School as we did with our staff. We had a booster clinic last weekend. So we're going to work with them to set up a clinic for students at Central at some point. Tony, do you have a date set?
Not yet, close.
Once we have that, we'll, we'll announce that, but it, it should be coming up here very soon.
From Iowa Public Health, it says, six legit reasons for students getting shots. Prevents severe illness, prevents long-term complications, they're most likely to infect others if they are tested positive. Side effects for kids are usually mild. Protect everyone in household. And then the last one says, skip traditional quarantine and exposed. I needed to be able to say all of that to be able to show why the importance of actually the kids having the vaccine. But having said that, my question is really is on that last one. Because it was talked about skipping traditional quarantine and exposed. In other words, is there some new protocols that are listed as in what the public health or CDC is saying on any of all that?
So, since the beginning of the year, our quarantine protocols have been different from where they were last year. So, the only time we quarantine is when you're COVID positive, that's automatically 10 days. So regardless of whether you're vaccinated or not, if it's a breakthrough case, it's still 10 days. If you're positive, it's 10 days. The only other time we're currently quarantining is if somebody else, a direct member of your family in the home is COVID positive. So, where last year, you know, we did a lot of contact tracing, you know, who are you sitting by? All of that has changed. And again, that's per Iowa Department of Public Health. So right now, there are two areas where we quarantine would be if they are actually positive or somebody in their household is positive.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Actually, I have more of a statement of concern, I guess. When we started with the mandate, we did it, we did it with Chelsea Elementary because they didn't have, those parents did not have access to a vaccination, or the kids didn't have access to a vaccination. Families that wanted it didn't have access to that. We didn't do the high school, we didn't do the junior high. We didn't do after-school events, because again, those, that was a choice that parents could make, you could either go or not go. And we allowed four days for parents to adjust and come up with a plan if there was a conflict of what they had. We're now going to do this one day later, which I guess my, my recommendation, if we, they're in school for five more days, and then they're off for Thanksgiving. So, I would rather see it go, that we start November 29th. Because that gives the parents 13 days to get, for five days of school, they get 13 days of opportunity to get a vaccination. So, that would be my personal preference for those five, so that's, I'll just express that from that side of it. And I don't know that, I don't know that the one day that we're allowing is going to be enough time to contact all the parents and tell them what's going on effectively. It would be more aligned with what we did before, I think if we went after Thanksgiving.
I don't think it would be very hard for parents to figure out in one day that they don't need to send their kid with a mask. And if they accidentally do, they don't have to worry, they can take it all. I would be in favor of Wednesday, the 17th.
You're not indicating that the staff will contact every parent. If a parent needs to express wishes, they'll contact the teacher, is that the direction?
I think we will communicate out through the buildings that should you wish for your child to remain in a mask, to contact your classroom teacher. That's one of the issues we had last May, when the law was passed, it was immediately implemented. So, it was very chaotic that first day, who was supposed to, who wasn't supposed to. That's part of the reason we, we did what we did in September, is give some additional days to transition and figure out who's going to apply for waivers, et cetera.
Students and staff still have the opportunity to, have the opportunity to wear the mask. Because I, I've been over at Susan Clark a couple of days, and, you know, we did have, there was a number of students that wear masks there. So, you know, they still can have that opportunity to wear the mask. I guess, my other comment would be, what happens, are we going to address that when it does happen? Because if the, if the costs will start to go up again, as, are we going to address that at that time? Or are we going to have to plan the place beforehand?
I think we're going to have to continue to monitor. You know, and really, the issue we ran into a year ago in November was just our staffing levels. The community spread was extremely high, couldn't keep teachers in the building, couldn't keep staffs in the building. So at that point, we couldn't effectively run, right? So we'll have to have some of those measures. We currently, you know, it's difficult to get subs in the district, so kind of on a daily basis, our buildings are in communication with our district office in teaching learning to determine, you know, how are you looking in terms of coverage, we're needing additional support. At times, we move district staff to cover in buildings, instructional coaches, et cetera. So, those are things we already kind of have in place in our monitoring, and we'll have to continue to do that.
Clint, one more, I, I love, part of my thought process of, one of the things I'm concerned about is the fact that even if parents wanted their kids to be vaccinated, they couldn't get that vaccination until November 5th. And then it's three weeks after that before they can get that second booster. Even if you were the most diligent parent, you ran out the very first day that it was available and you got kids vaccinated to get that second one so that they become fully vaccinated, or they're on their way to being fully vaccinated. If we waited till November 29th, it would fall within that. I, I do have the concern that if the, I understand, we have parents that don't want their kids to wear masks. I also understand that we have parents that want their kids to be vaccinated. So, no matter what we do, I know we're going to be wrong with this in some people's mind, and I know we're going to be right in other people's mind. I can accept that. But I just think from a logic standpoint, in my mind, it doesn't make sense to rush for that five days. I think there's a whole lot of business it takes, being on the school side of it, I just know how much work it takes to try to contact parents and answer questions and come up with, there will be a whole lot of whatevs that we're not going to be able to address until they happen. We just know that that's what's going to happen. So, I feel we're kind of rushing this, and we really could have an opportunity to pick up 13 days for parents that want their kids to have that opportunity to be vaccinated, so I'll be done.
Any other discussion, any other feedback?
I would just say, I do understand your mayor's speaking, where Mike is coming from. I also understand where Clint is coming from. I understand where our families are coming from, as in what all this has done to us in many different fashions, many ways. Some good, some negative, you know, everything with it. I think that it would be probably best if we use the 17th, in my opinion, so that we can make sure that we are moving forward. We need to move forward. I personally, personally, I would feel best if we took and wait until all kids are actually gone all the way through their vaccination process. But it's going to be difficult in which to be able to take and get that. I think available, Clint has given us information that shows us the, what the staff and such would like to be able to have. So I would suggest that we look at our hearts and our mind and come up with a decision how we feel most comfortable with.
Okay. Couple of things I would like to stress here, that Clint, we want to make sure that you will continue to monitor the situation and update us on the numbers as we are moving this direction. The other thing is, we want to make sure that the parents, if they choose to send also their kids with the mask, that they, it's, it's, it's fine with that, and we are honoring that the same way we honor some of the parents who decided not to send their kids with masks and sign the waiver for that. And we accepted that. Any other discussion items? Okay. If there's no discussion, I would like to ask all of you, those of you who are in favor of lifting up the mask on the 17th of November, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carrying. Thank you. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is discussion and information. And the first item is the conflict of enterprise, which is the work policy 2.3.8 E. I assume all board members received a file from Daphne. It looks like this. And inside that file, basic questions that we need to answer, yes or no. And basically, provide the information, sign this form, date, and send that to Daphne or Tom by, is there a date?
Just as soon as possible. You can give it to her tonight later, or just send it, give it to her tomorrow, or?
Yeah. And, and if you have any question, you can connect with any of us as board members here, or you can connect with Daphne and she can walk you through that. Thank you. With that, we will move back to Tom for September financials.
You betcha. Okay. Apologize for the length of the financials. Typically, it's not 12 pages, but we're, up until this month, we've been reporting on FY21. So, tonight is the first time that we are getting our FY22 financials ready to show, to present. Typically, you know, we meet on the second Monday of the month. Typically, my department needs at least a good 10 business days to close out the prior month. So we'll always be, you might want to think of it as a month behind. So we're going to report out through September tonight. So, oh wait, did I say, yeah, September, even though this is October, it is through September, so. I'm going to, to get out the July, August, September bank balances, the fund financial summary through September, and then our published budget to actual expenditures through September. And then just, the general fund is the one that we kind of report every month, kind of giving you more detail since that is the major fund for, for us. And then on this front page is typically kind of when we do action items related to school finance, either informational or they're action items. And then just down at the bottom in the bold, I'll just point out, those are obviously several years out. For the new board members, you'll learn about what these are, but those are dates out into the future that we need to keep in front of us and determine next steps for, for them. So pages two, three, and four are our deposit balances as of July, August, and September. Typically, this is showing our reconciliation of our bank accounts compared to our treasurer's balance on our, on our finance system by fund. And then it also always shows, you know, what were the prior month's balances and what is the difference between the current month and, and the prior month, so. On pages, on page five, it is just one report through the month of September, that's our fund financial summary. Basically, our fund balance. And this is just a year-to-date revenue, year-to-date expense, and our, what our fund balance is. Obviously, you know, these are presented in the order of the general fund, the management fund, and PEPAL are all property tax funds. Although we do show a debt service fund, we don't actually levy for that because we, we use physical planning equipment money to pay for some, we leased purchase some technology about three years ago. So this fiscal year, we made our last payment. So typically, we will not have a debt service fund. But I have to show it because in order to pay that, we have to transfer the money from PEPAL to debt service, so. And then the activity fund, again, it's a self-sustaining fund. Save, that's that sales tax revenue fund. Nutrition fund is a enterprise fund, and I do kind of make an asterisk there because, again, you're going to learn about these, especially when we start into the presenting audit, that because nutrition fund is an enterprise fund, we make some adjustments that were required to, by the governmental accounting standards board. So I kind of back those out. Because if we included them, it would appear that the nutrition fund is running in the red, and they are not. They are definitely running in the black, so. So nothing unusual to report on the fund financial summary for September. The next page is page six, and that is showing our actual expenditures to the published budget. So, looking back at our calendar, in April of 2022, we're going to publish our FY23 budget. This is our FY22 budget that we published last April. So we're just monitoring our actual expenditures to what was published. And you'll be able to see what percent of our budget we have left. And although it's important that we show fund by fund, the only column we're really concerned about is the published budget, the third from the, from the right-hand side compared to the total used. So, it's, it's a total district-wide that we have to monitor, but we do break it out by fund. So, the final three, or the final six pages, the first three, seven, eight, nine are regarding general fund revenues. And so I think what I would point out is in July, very little revenue is received for the fiscal year. July and August, very little revenue is received. In September is when we start collecting that state foundation aid that you'll learn about, and then a little bit of property tax. But the main property tax comes in October, because we all pay property tax in September, so we'll get a big jump in October. But this general fund revenue summary just shows year-to-date, in the months of July, August, and September, our revenues. And by what source? Are they local, are they state, or are they federal? The last three pages, 10, 11, and 12, are, are expenditures in the categories of salary benefits and non-salary and benefits. As on the revenues, I have not put in the FY21.
As on the revenues, I have not put in the FY22 budget, line item budget, that is. Obviously, we put, we publish a budget in April, but it isn't until now when we start developing and building that line item budget based on the expenditures we actually know, you know, salary benefits, and et cetera. So that's very close to being done, but I didn't want to put it on here until I can feel, you know, fairly confident that we will have our line item budget set for FY22. It will be on there next month when we report in October. But again, this just shows you in the months of July and August, typically what our expenses are, and then in the month of September, you'll see a big jump, and that's because September is that month where we start paying teachers for the 21, 22 school year. In July and August, they were receiving their last two payments from the prior fiscal year, so that was all expensed in FY21. And so that's why you see a big increase, so. Again, it's a little bit longer than usual, but I would be happy to meet with the three new board members about when you go to ISB. Again, I strongly recommend School Finance 101. When you come back, I'd be glad to sit down with you to talk about how, what you learned, how that all points back to Muscatine Schools, and what our financials look like, so. That's it.
Any question for Tom?
Tom, you do know what we're going to get? Wouldn't you anticipate SRR $2?
Okay, so those federal dollars are all, we have to expend the money and then submit for reimbursement. The first time that we were able to submit for quarter one of fiscal '22 was November 1st through the 15th, so I just submitted that. And so we would, we should, we are using SRR $2 now, and that will be reported, I'm guessing we'll get that in December, so. So I don't know if that answered your question specifically, but we are getting, we are using SRR $2 now.
And then the health expenses, are those claims?
No. What you're seeing on this report is not related to the self-funding insurance. I apologize for that. It is strictly what we normally would expense during a payroll cycle for all staff, if they're on benefits, they're on health insurance.
Are there any surprises or anything that you look at and kind of go, eh?
Not on these first three months. I didn't, I wouldn't point out anything significant. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other question for Tom? Thank you, Tom, for the information.
Thank you.
The next item is announcement, upcoming meetings and events. November 17th to 18th, the Iowa Association of School Board Convention, and my understanding there, the three new board members, and Karen Cooney will be going to that, so please learn as much as you can during those two days, and come back and share that with us. Thank you. November 24th, no school, no contract day. November 25th, no school, Thanksgiving Day. November 26th, no school, no contract day. December 13th, regular board meeting at 7:00 PM here in City Hall. And December 14th, Riverbend Food pantry at 4:30 PM at the administration building. Any other announcement from any board member? We would like to wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy the time with the family, with the friends, with whoever you want to have and spend your day with, and be safe. With that, we move into our last item on the agenda. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, everybody.